Good evening and welcome to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for March 28, 2022. The meeting is live in city council chambers, can also be viewed on LTC, you'll have it on top of smartphone and Zoom if you wish to call in or zoom in. We will provide you the opportunity to speak. If you wish to speak on behalf of petition tonight, please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the public record. If you have a phone, please turn on vibrator, turn it off, and if you need to engage in conversation, please do so in the hall for the quorum of the meeting. Tonight's alternative voting members, Mr. George Proko. We'll go right into continued business under ZBA 2022-3 at variance, 505 Capital Partners LLC at 3840 Swift Street, Section 5.1 and Section 6.1.10. 505 Capital Partners LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals to subdivide the existing lot at 3840 Swift Street and construct a no two-family dwelling on the new lot. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood two-family TTF zoning district and requires various approval under Section 5.1 for minimum lot area dwelling per unit, minimum frontage, minimum or maximum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, and minimum rear yard setback under Section 1.10 to exceed the maximum allowed curb cup for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. We have the petitioner here this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Kenneth Lanier from Cornerstone Land Associates representing the applicant tonight. Where before you, thank you, sir, for a continued hearing. As you may recall, we presented the plan to the zoning board of appeals at a previous hearing. We were scheduled for a continued hearing when we received comments from the Division of Planning and Development that I wasn't comfortable moving forward with to the board as there was some concern with the revised layout of the site plan and the building that we had provided. We've since then had the opportunity to meet with Fran at the DPD to review the site plan and discuss alternative building designs and layouts. I believe that the updated version that we had sent Fran, she was a little bit more comfortable with, but still wanted to have some additional tweaking done to those site plans and, I'm sorry, building plans. And I believe as part of our discussion, she had forwarded an email to the board outlining that she would be comfortable with the board moving forward as long as a condition was provided to allow DPD to have final review, say, on the building design, moving forward with this project. And we are in agreement with that condition, Mr. Chairman. So if there are any other additional questions or comments, I'd be glad to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. This time I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up the board, Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I did get a chance to see the meeting from the last meeting that I couldn't attend. And I saw the updated plans you sent in, Miss Lanier. I think overall, you know, I don't see any issues. And, you know, thank you for being patient and working with the board and DPD to make this project, I think, beneficial for you, but for the city and the neighborhood as a whole. So I wish you the best of luck, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Miss Lanier, for providing the new updated plans. I know there was a lot of things that would have to be changed from the previous plans on this. And I know it's a very tight neighborhood there that we wanted to, I think one of the main things was to get the, try to get some of the cars off the streets because the street is very, very narrow. And I know there were concerns from DPD on the building being not similar to what's in the neighborhood, but I think it would be very beneficial based on the layout you have. Just going through my notes from the last time you were before us in meetings and I'm looking at the site plans and I think one of the things that I believe Dennis had proposed last time was to have the types of plantings that were going to be on the property identified and what kind of plantings that were going to be. I don't really see that on the site plan. Is that anywhere? Am I missing it somewhere or?
Yes, Mr. Callan, that is in the bottom left middle, I guess, right below the site plan designation of the proposed layout. You can see that there are gray birch and I believe the other item for plantings we had proposed were Mission Arbivites. So we're going to, you know, we are taking some trees down on the lot and we wanted to make sure that we replace some trees. So we did propose the two gray birch in the rear and then along the side of each driveway, we were putting in some, you know, anywhere from three to seven-foot Mission Arbivites. And we believe that will at least, you know, provide some landscaping along the front. The front of the parcel will be grassed. I know that, Mr., I apologize. I know that we should have provided some sidewalk accesses, but I didn't want to make that final plan until we finalize the building with DPD. I know Fran did want us to try a couple of more revised scenarios and also speak with Steve from the historic, you know, building department just to ensure that what we do design there does fit in with the neighborhood and that last building will be then situated on the plan. We'll provide the sidewalk access as we identify where the actual egress points of the building will be. And then our anticipation would be to grass the remaining front of the structure.
Okay. No, thank you. I see that on the site plan now. I just didn't, I guess I must have missed it. So, but otherwise, no, like I said, I think this can be a great plan, good for the neighborhood. I think you've meet the, you meet the criteria for a variance and that would be an improvement of this with the condition as you previously mentioned. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, specifically the idea of the garage that you have now in the back. I'm just trying to figure out how I would drive my car down that driveway and maneuver it to fit in the garage. Is the intent for the garage to be not for cars but for other things like motorcycles and bicycles and things? Because it really doesn't seem like it would be usable for a vehicle to be parked there.
Yeah, Mr. McCarthy, we did have a buyer who was interested and they do have some recreational vehicles that they'd like to store in a garage in the rear there. We anticipated instead of just making one unit with the garage, we don't have, you know, a buyer already secured for the second unit, but ultimately we figured it would be easier for construction to build the two units similarly like they did on Manchester Street with garages in each unit. And ultimately, you know, a small vehicle obviously could fit in there. But again, I think you are correct in stating that recreational vehicles was the intent for those garages.
Okay. And then you show plans, architectural plans, that have stairs that lead down from the, I guess, the second floor on the sides.
Yep.
But on the site, on the site plan, you only show a three-foot dimension on the left side and a four-foot dimension on the right side to accommodate these stairs before you have a eight-foot wide driveway.
Yep. We actually, Mr. McCarthy, we revised those plans, sat down with Fran, showed the decks in the rear with the stairs so that it was exactly as is shown on the site plan. That was just a miscommunication between the architect and myself when completing the project submission. So reason I didn't submit those additional plans is because Fran was still not completely comfortable with the layout that we provided and ultimately asked us to make some additional tweaks to meet with Steve from the historic district to really get a better layout for the structure and the facade of the structure in the front and on the sides as well as window placement, front porches, as well as the rear decks. So ultimately, we were at least under the impression that with Fran's email for the inclusion of us coordinating with Steve and historic and Fran and DPD, that we'd come up with a final building layout that would, you know, primarily situate exactly where it's shown on the site plan with the decks in the rear, access in the front, and a final set of drawings submitted to the planning board, I'm sorry, the planning department to be approved prior to any issuance of building permits.
Okay. So the idea of having a condition on here that the applicant will work with DPD to finalize the design for the proposed structure, that includes Steve Stoll to help resolve the elevations, particularly the side elevations, that now will be different, maybe not vastly different, but certainly won't have these stairs and exit egress doors on them. They'll hopefully have those.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So we're looking at DPD's involvement in resolving site issues as well as elevation issues, correct?
That is correct, Mr. McCarthy.
All right. All right. I am a little torn. I think that it's great that we're tasking DPD to work with you to do that. I just wish that in the weeks that you've had prior to the meeting that you had a chance to get this further along for us as a board, or myself especially, to understand what the final product is going to be. However, I'm willing to go along with the condition, I guess. I just think that, I don't like the habit of not having the, the design resolved prior to us voting on it, but I'll listen to my other board members, but I think I could be persuaded to go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin by echoing the thoughts of my colleague where I kind of frowned upon the fact that, that as much trust I have in the professionalism of our dedicated DPD staff without actually seeing the final print in hand, I have a little, I have a bit of hesitation in going forth without seeing the actual plans before us before we take a right vote. However, the original plans, as indicated in the comments, number seven, the original plans were frowned upon by the staff. But since that time, since that time, significant revisions have been made, primarily you're agreeable to further work with DPD staff on the, on the final redesign of the project with respect to its elevations. I believe you'd made sufficient, excuse me, sufficient revisions which now allows staff to recommend the approval of the project. So I don't want my initial statement to be misconstrued. I have great faith in the, in the work of our dedicated DPD staff, but I do think it makes perfect sense for us to have the final project in hand before making a vote. Having said that, because of the trust, the expertise of this department, I will vote in favor of the, of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with fellow members, you would like to see the final product before we vote on it. I mean, it sounds like it may take another continuance until the tweaks have been presented in full before the board. But, Mr. Lanier, I do appreciate the amendments that you made because, you know, from the first presentation to, to the updates, I mean, there is quite a change. And, but it's, as my fellow board members said, it is a little difficult to grant outright approval without seeing the final tweaks. But just based on the changes that was made, I would eventually vote in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, you've had, you've heard the comments of the board and the, the back and forth of conditions. You know, I too will look at this favorably, but as a matter of practice and precedent and standard to the board, I would seek support for a continuance to get the final documents in place. Therefore, and again, the due diligence of the DPD and as well as you, Miss Lanier, over the course of many, many years has been at the utmost professionalism and integrity. And the purpose of that is, and the onus is on both those parties, but in this particular case, the onus is, in my opinion, on the board to have all the proper documents in place. And as we have done in the past, and most recently, we have, we have enforced the document process. So that's my position. Any other comments from the board and Mr. Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I think after hearing you speak, sir, and my colleagues, why I do agree that, Miss Lanier, and the petition has made a lot of efforts and, you know, consensus and compromises for this, for this project, I do, I do agree that in the best practice and to be fair to all applicants, you know, all the documentations, updated plans, like, like I said earlier, I don't see any issues from, for my part, but it is hard, like my colleague said, to, to render a final opinion with not all the plans and documents submitted. So I would, I would support a continuance if you agree, Ms. Colleague, and my, and my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other comments? Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I think the precedent of approving documents that rely on staff to make significant efforts to align them with the intent of zoning and the context of the neighborhood, I think is not, not the choice that I would like to see the board make. So continuance makes a lot of sense in my opinion, too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Mr. Brier?
I would support that effort.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns of the board? And, you know, just, just for a point of clarification, my intent on the continuance is because it's, it's too gray of a matter to have a condition that includes a site plan. Those conditions are relatively minor and moving forward. So I believe our next meeting is April 11th. Bring on April. Mr. Lanier, is that acceptable to you, I think, in all fairness to all involved?
Mr. Chairman, that is absolutely fair. We will reach out to Steve to try and ensure we can get his input on the final layout of the proposed structure. And I'll have those drawings into you prior to the April 11th hearing.
Thank you. That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-3 for 3840 Swift Street to continue the public hearing in this matter to April 11th.
Second. Second by Mr. Brier. I have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve continuance to April 11th, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to April 11th, 2022.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to April 11th.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance, April 11th, 2022.
We appreciate your time, Miss Lanier, and we look forward to finalizing your petition on that date.
Excellent. I appreciate it, gentlemen. We will not make it habit of these plans not being completed for any of our future hearings. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to another continued business, ZBA 2022-10, a variance for Nouranjan Baghett at 45 Catherine Drive, Section 5.1. Nouranjan Baghett has applied to the zoning board of appeals to construct in addition to the existing single family at 45 Catherine Drive. The property is located in suburban single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area ratio FAR requirement and any other relief required on Lowell ordinance. I've been informed the petitioner is in Zoom, on Zoom, rather. Good evening, sir. If you could tell us a little bit about the project and where we ought to move forward for a vote this evening.
Hi, this is Nouranjan Baghett.
Good evening.
So we are planning...
Could you just state your name and your address for the public record, please?
Yes. My name is Nouranjan Baghett from 45 Catherine Drive, Lowell, Mass. 01854.
Thank you.
So we are, we are planning to do addition on the, on the backside of the house. It's about like, I think, 15 feet on the back and we are building a front porch, which is like six by 32, like a whole house frame. And then we are building a top of the garage. We are building another room. So I'm applying for the variance, see if it's available to do that or not. And I have submitted the site plan and, and the house plan.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. That being said, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up the board, Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. This doesn't, I mean, I've reviewed this. This doesn't seem to be too much of a hassle, I would think. I understand that, you know, you had to, it's persisting non-conforming matters, partially, partially of which have been grandfathered in. It looks like the relief that you're seeking doesn't appear to be extensive. You're just adding on a new addition over the garage and moving the deck over, minimizing the deck, moving it over and putting it just to extend out for a little bit of the family room and extra master bedroom. All which seems to be, you know, fit within the scheme of the footprint of the building. So I don't really have any issues on this matter, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you.
Thank you. Van? Mr. Vice Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, like, I agree with my colleague, Ms. Callahan, that this is pretty straightforward. I think the relief you're seeking is very minimal, in my opinion, you know, and thank for all the documentation and the pictures of the public posting on your site as well. So I think, you know, I think this would be not just a good addition to your home, sir, but to the neighborhood as a whole, and it won't be a detriment. I think it'd add value to the neighborhood as a whole. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with the, with fellow board members. It doesn't look like there is any negative impact on this. It's, it's a nice property, nice neighborhood, and I think the variance that, that they're seeking, you know, will only positively impact the neighborhood. And so I, again, it looks at standard vanilla, you know, layout, so I don't think there would be any issues. I'd be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the plan. I also believe it's very doable. I look very favorably upon it. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, but I noticed in the comments, Dylan and Serena, that there's a proposed FAR listed at .40, but I don't see that in the documents that were provided in the application. The site plan has a .2 plus or minus, I think, as proposed. So is this how, I'm wondering how that was determined and if the documents that are available for us to review, are there, is there another document that states the .40?
Peter calculated it, but my assumption is that we have a file that tracks the FAR of all the properties in the city. And basically, he probably calculated the square footage of the additional living space and added that to the existing square footage and then calculated the FAR that way.
Okay. So it was done in-house? The applicant didn't provide that information? We provided it for him?
That was my, that was a guess that the applicant may be able to clarify.
All right. I'd just like to make a condition that the applicant provide a document that states the FAR being .40 or whatever it is, since that seems to be missing. And then it looks like we're adding two bedrooms, two full baths, and a family room? Is that the scope of the addition? Yep.
Yes.
It's, it's, so we're going to have five, a five-bedroom house? That's, 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 that's palatial. That's wonderful. A growing family. And three full baths and a half bath? Wow. Okay. I like the restraint that we did not encroach on the already set dimension of the 15 feet on the side yard that the garage currently has. And the height of the addition doesn't change the character of the existing house in the neighborhood. So I think that judging from the restraint shown, that I can support this. I just have that one condition I'd like to see is that the site plan reflect the FAR request. And if it's different than .40, then I guess, I don't know what we do. I mean, we, I hope it's .40. That would be part of our relief that we're granting, right?
I'm not sure that you would have to be granting relief to an exact FAR. You'd just be granting approval to the proposed addition and whatever FAR that equals up to. So you wouldn't need the exact number.
All right. I think I hear you. I agree. I can't imagine it being much beyond that if the FAR was significant, but at least we only have a .4.
All proportional, so.
Uh, deviation, .04 deviation.
It would show it's proportional to...
All right. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I think it's, I think it's a great project. I went by the property recently. I think the front porch addition is, is going to be a welcome, extra space for you to go out and try to relax. So I will say that the restraint of what you could, could have done makes us much easier to look at it. I think as we look at the FAR, it's proportionate and a condition to satisfy the board, I think, is in place. Are you agreeable with that, sir?
Thank you. Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. So we're going to have one condition. That being said, may I have a, any other, excuse me, any other comments or concerns by the board?
Just trying to figure out how to, how we're going to, how we word in this, the site, that, to submit site plans that reflect the FARs in proportion with...
Proportionate to zoning?
Proportionate to zoning? Does that, that work, Dylan? Okay. You got that down? You got that, you got that down as a condition? Okay. All right. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-10 for 45 Catherine Drive for variance approval under Section 5.1 for maximum floor area ratio to construct in addition to the existing single-family residential building with the previously mentioned condition. May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
I can invite the vice chairman. I have a roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with condition.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve with conditions.
So you may unanimously approve. We wish you the best of luck with your project. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Moving forward on the new, new business, ZBA 2022-7, a variance for KM Construction at 76 Epping Street. Section 5.1, petition KM Construction has applied to zoning board of appeals to construct in addition to the existing single-family home at 76 Epping Street. The property is located in traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for relief from the zoning, from the maximum floor area ratio FAR requirements and any other relief required under Lowell ordinance. The petitioner here this evening.
Good evening, board members. This is Kyle Marty from KM Construction, applicant for Kelly Ramsey, homeowner at 76 Epping Street. We're looking to construct in addition to the single-family home, seeking a variance approval for relief from the max FAR. I can share my screen... I can share my screen with you guys. I don't know if you have the drawings in front of you to kind of give a description. Yeah, so ultimately, this is the rendering. So this would be, so I'll go back to, so to construct the addition, we would have to demolish this, the rear deck here. This is a shed, actually, the rear deck. Any portion of this shed would have to be removed. And so there would be a bedroom addition here, and I will show you on the renderings. And then the bathroom addition would be right over here. So this is the family, this is the room, the bedroom addition, and then this is the bathroom addition on the second floor. I do know that we originally, on the original drawings, we did not meet the side yard setback. And we did revise those drawings to meet that side yard setback, which I believe was ten feet. But yeah, so ultimately, we'd be removing this deck, a portion of this, I'm sorry, this shed and a portion of this deck to construct the addition.
Okay. If you go, if you go, if you have additional outline in red, what are you gonna be doing on the inside?
Yeah, so this right here is the second part. We'd be replacing this window with a door.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other, anything else at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up the board. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions about the addition in the back. It seems like you've decided to not have a full foundation, but you're setting this on, on posts. Is there a reason for that?
Not particularly. Just cost, I guess.
Okay. I'm sure it is a savings to have three posts rather than a full foundation. But I was just wondering, the basement is not finished space. And I was just wondering is, if that, that space underneath it were to become finished, if that would affect the FAR? And right now, we're doing the, the variance for the FAR based on just what we have in front of us for the additional bedroom and bath?
So I can answer that. Basements are calculated already into the FAR as long as they have a ceiling high enough to be considered habitable space. So that's already calculated in and considered for FAR purposes.
Okay. Dylan, the space below the bedroom addition is not a full basement, is just open space. And my feeling is that maybe as we get further down with the construction here, that the project might do a full basement, depending on how things go in the field. Does that affect the FAR variance if it changes?
No, that space would already be included in the existing FAR.
Okay.
Even if it's unfinished right now, it's still included?
Even if it's open air?
If it's open, no, if it doesn't have walls around it, then no.
Right.
Well.
And so that's my thinking is that as we go down this road, people tend to enjoy a warm floor. And having an open area below tends to not be as, you know, reasonable. So if we go down, and then they decide that they need to have this enclosed, then we would need additional FAR relief?
Yes, they would need to file, I think in this case, a minor modification to come back.
Okay, so that would just be a minor modification. So it's not a big, big change in, in the event that they do change their structural. I know we had this come up with the building inspector on another project recently, that he didn't like the posts and he wanted to have a full foundation. I don't know how this one will turn out, but it's a minor modification down the road if we have to look at it as a full foundation. Okay.
He would file a minor modification, then it would be the board's decision whether it's a minor modification or whether a full application should be filed.
All right. Fair enough.
If it, if it would, if it would be a full foundation, it'd be a crawl space. So you'd only have like four and a half feet under that addition.
On your elevations, it looks like it's closer to five or six. And judging from, I mean, you don't, you didn't provide a grading plan, so I really can't tell from the site what the grades are back there. But in any event, I, I'm not gonna worry about it. It's, it's on you. If you have a change in your structure and you go with a full foundation, that's something you come back for a change for the FAR, in the event that that's deemed basement space, that's not a crawl space. So I have no further questions. I think that this makes a lot of sense and does not have a big ask for us to grant a variance here for the small amount of relief being sought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I believe that the relief being requested is minimal. And as a result, I look favorably upon this petition. Thank you. Thank you. Ben, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would agree that it's, I think the relief the applicant is seeking is very minimal. And the addition would add not just great value to their home, but to the neighborhood as a whole, I think, overall, that'd be just a great addition for the, for the family and for the city. So I, I don't see any concerns on my part. And I wish the applicant the very best in your project. And thank you for the detailed plans. I appreciate it. A lot of visual, a lot of, you know, a lot of documents submitted, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with my fellow members that this would have minimal impact. I think it would be great relief to the applicant as well in expanding the home to make it more spacious and more palatable for his family. So just looking at the area, when I drove by, I, I see that a lot of the houses do conform with each other. And I don't think there will be any negative impact on this modification or this variance request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I don't see that this, this seems like to be a minimal request on the part of the applicant. It would be beneficial for the property owner to add the additional bedroom based on the narrative that she provided as far as the living situations there. So I, I would look favorably on this. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So, so you've heard the comments of the board. I, I think your request is reasonable. Just keep in mind the comments that if you make a structural change to that foundation and or seek to enclose, you come back to the board for approval for minor modification.
Okay.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty-two dash seven for seventy-six Epping Street for variance approval under section five point one for maximum floor area ratio to construct in addition to an existing single-family residential building.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second motion?
Second by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approved.
So you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck with your project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all members. Have a great night.
Thank you. You the same. Continuing with ZBA twenty twenty-two dash nine for variance and special permit. HMD Enterprises, twelve oh one Westford Street, section six point three. HMD Enterprises has applied to the zoning board of appeals, speaking special permit and variance approval at twelve oh one Westford Street. The applicant seeks to erect an eternally illuminated pylon sign at the property. This would be the second, second pylon sign at the property. The subject property is located in the Office Park, OP zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the zoning board of appeals pursuant to section six point three to erect an eternally illuminated sign, variance approval pursuant to section six point three to erect a second pylon sign at the property. And any other relief required on Lowell's ordinance? There's a petitioner here this evening via Zoom.
Yep.
Good evening.
My name, sorry. My name is Vasu. I'm from Fast Signs and I'm representing HMD Enterprises for their location at twelve oh one Westford Street. And we are proposing an eternally illuminated monument sign for their location here. And I think it's a, they can't really have a wall sign, basically, because it's only pointing to one direction. So we proposed a monument sign. And, you know, they, they wanted to go a little bit bigger, but I thought, you know, why not create something unique, something which is not on that street, something that actually stands out and just catches people's attention? So, you know, we came up with this idea of the monument sign, the double-sided, illuminated, and the sides also light up, including the face. And then the letters would be pushed through, illuminated. And some of the hexagon shapes would be illuminated, not all of them. So it creates that nice, unique, you know, something different that you don't see all the time. So, and definitely different compared to the adjacent signers that you see. You know, a lot of them are just pylons and stuff like that. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Open up to the board, Mark. No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark. Judge?
I approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ben?
To me, it's pretty straightforward, Mr. Chairman. It's very similar in terms of signage and the other surrounding business and, you know, illumination and, you know, it's for marketing and it's creative way, like you said, sir. And I appreciate the visual and documents, too. It's a, it's a good little kind of picture, at least for me. So I, I have no complaints, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Generally speaking, it looks like a good idea for the signage to be on there. I guess a couple of questions. It's, it's gonna be eternally illuminated, correct?
Yep.
So what are the, what are the proposed hours for the business?
Usually, well, they haven't come up with hours yet, but they're, I believe they close at ten for their other location in April. I can, if you, I can check right now if you'd like me to, like.
All right, if you want to, just check real quick while, while we're talking about this. Normally, what we do for eternally illuminated signs is our, our standard has been the signs to be on one hour before sun's rise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever is later. If that's something you think your client would be agreeable to, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, they, I don't, I think they'd be okay with that. They close at nine PM for their April location, so I would assume similar hours here. Seven days a week, they close at nine, so.
Okay. So, and I see, and I see that you got, the signage, you know, you have it planned to be put off about twenty feet off the road, just fine. But is, there's another sign there for other businesses that are in the, the general sign that identifies the number of the building. Is there gonna be any obstruction of that signage if anybody's looking for any business for that, for anything else other than what's in there? Is there, I'm just trying to, trying to figure it out.
Oh, yeah. So we, I went out there and I made sure where to put it so that it doesn't obstruct that sign itself and also doesn't obstruct any parking, any cars coming in and out, so it doesn't block any view. Because the sign is, it is vertical versus more of a horizontal shape. So I took that into account and, you know, that's, that's, that was the best location to put it, so.
Okay, so I guess, I guess I'm just looking at it from the sign of like if someone's driving, I mean, they're, they're looking for twelve oh one Westford Street, there shouldn't be any obstruction with your sign, with your client's signage to, to see the number of twelve, the number of that building on that sign that's already existing there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, if your, if your client's in, as long as your client's in agreement with the condition as far as the illumination, I have no other concerns, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean, Dennis.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to know that, what, um, thing for illumination? When do they have to turn it off? Is it an hour after close or?
An hour after close, an hour after sunset or after close, whichever comes later.
Okay.
So you said nine, if sunset goes past nine, sometimes in the summer it will, you got an hour after that. But otherwise, it's ten o'clock. If that's, if that's what your client's closing time is.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First one is, what part of the sign is illuminated? Is it the words Full Harvest Moons or Cannabis Dispensary? Or, I'm, I'm just unclear as to what you're illuminating.
Sure. So if you, I don't know if you have the, the creator of the layout, but on the fourth, the illumination is Full Harvest Moons, Cannabis Dispensary, and a few of the hexagon shapes, and then the, the side of the sign and the top of the sign, the, the yellow portion, I guess.
Wow. Okay, so that's, that's a very highly illuminated sign. Okay. I think that in the comments, the location of the sign seems to be a little fuzzy with the fact that you're providing a, a drawing that says twenty feet back to the sign from the curb. But we don't understand where the property line is. I'd like to make a condition that you provide a document that identifies the property line and locates the sign on a plot plan or a site plan that identifies it being, you know, within the property, for one. But I'm guessing that it's probably, if that sidewalk is five or six feet, somewhere between fourteen and fifteen feet back from the property line, just because we don't really have that document that it's, that it sits on your property. For all we know, the right of way for that road stretch could be part of the green space, not just the sidewalk. And so I think we need to clarify that in a document locating the sign on the site, if that's okay.
I thought the second page with the red outline, which I got from the Lowell map on the town website, I thought that is the plot line for the, and the sign itself is pretty much a little bit past the existing sign. So from that point of view, I, you know, I, I thought that was the site plan, that, that, on the page two with the red box.
I, I don't believe that document on the city site, city GIS can be used to discern meets and bounds and property lines. Is that correct, Dylan?
Yes, the city GIS is not, is not exact, but if it's, in cases where it's clear and obvious that it's on the site, we don't always require a site plan.
Well, judging from the comments from the engineering department, they're kind of looking for us to clarify that. So if they don't feel comfortable with it, I think we should ask the applicant to do that.
Okay, yeah.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, we, we are also working with Full Harvest Moons and we can most certainly get DPD a site plan for the location of the sign.
Then I think we could do that condition. I think that'd be terrific, that we would be able to ask the applicant to have an approval conditional that they provide a site plan that identifies the setback in roughly the fourteen or fifteen-foot dimension from the property line.
Sure.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hammer. I appreciate your input. Any other comments, concerns? Uh, any other comments, concerns of the board? So, sir, we're just looking to have a, uh, a confirmation on the site of the, of the sign, if you could submit that document as a matter of condition and, and the illumination hours and you're in agreeance?
Yep.
Are you in agreeance with those two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-9 for 1201 Westford Street, well, is, um, actually doing two.
Two.
Two votes, so.
Right.
Um, special permit approval under section 6.3 to erect an eternally illuminated sign with the condition that the hours of illumination will be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later. And the second condition is the applicant is to provide a site plan with location of sign from the property line.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. McCarthy, may I roll call on special permit? Approval conditions?
Approval condition.
Approval condition?
Approve with condition?
Approval.
Approve with condition?
Sir, you've been approved for your special permit. May I have a motion for the variance, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2022-9 for 1201 Westford Street for variance approval under section 6.3 to erect a second pylon sign with previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second? Second by Vice Chairman Peck. May I roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approval condition?
Vice Chair Peck?
Approval condition?
Member Callahan?
Approval conditions?
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition?
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Prokop?
Approve with conditions.
You've been unanimously approved on your variance and special permit. We wish you and your client the best of luck on the site.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2022-11, variance Lin Lowell LLC at 484-8 Wigan Street and 153 Willie Street, section 5.1 and section 6.1. Lin Lowell LLC has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Board to construct a 12-unit residential structure on the currently vacant lots at 4-8 Wigan Street and 153 Willie Street. The subject property is located in urban multifamily UMF zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval, section 11.4.2 from the Planning Board, variance approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum side yard setback, minimum yard setback pursuant 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street parking requirements and any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Great to see you.
Very nice to meet you. Uh, Attorney George Theodore, 133 Market Street, uh, representing the applicant Lin Lowell LLC. Uh, this, this project was approved last week before the Planning Board for site plan review, uh, with, with a number of conditions applied to it. Uh, I wanted to go over a bit of the history of this project, which goes back, oh, almost two years, uh, in which the applicant acquired 4 and 8 Wigan Street and met with the City of Lowell, and the City of Lowell proposed that they purchase 153 Willie Street and also, uh, apply for a zoning extension, extending the urban multifamily zone, uh, from the light industrial zone and extending the urban multifamily through it to allow for the development of this lot, which is a 15,000 square foot lot. That application for a zoning change was done over a year ago, and approximately one year ago, on March of 2021, uh, I appeared before the Planning Board and presented the zoning change, and the zoning change was allowed. Uh, the preliminary plans for the development of this 15,000 square foot lot was proposed by the DPD for 12 units. They always wanted 12 units at this site. Uh, the city council then went forward, the city council passed the zoning ordinance, the property was voted on by the council as surplus property, the property was appraised at $55,000 for us to purchase that property to the city. So it, it was, it was found that with respect to, to this development in this area right here, uh, and historically, this lot was in what's called the acre revitalization plan. One of the benefits of a private applicant doing this, uh, is that we remove it from that plan and we develop this property as a private, uh, as a, as a private developer. That was all part of the zoning change that was made a year ago, in which the board found that the zoning ordinance, ordinance amendment met the goals and objectives, objectives of the acre plan to extend the urban multifamily through the light industrial, and that the proposed zoning amendment would maintain the intent of the zoning in the surrounding neighborhood and, and these are findings of the Planning Board from a year ago, and the subject property would be a logical extension of the UMF zoning district. That was all done a year ago, and since then, we've gone forward with the configuration of, of the plans, and we went forward and presented the plans, filed them, had a hearing last week for site plan review, and we were approved. Now, it probably should have been a good idea to notify directly and meet with some of the abutters in the neighborhood. Uh, Alan Kazanjin owns a considerable amount of property on Dutton Street. I've known Alan for approximately 30 years. I know him and I respect him for the work that he's done in the City of Lowell. Uh, notwithstanding that, we're aware of a plan that Alan did, a very good plan that was approved by the, the Board of Appeals for, uh, 60 Fletcher Street, which is gonna be in part placing a, a retail bank. Uh, we believe that the approval, we're talking about a policy of planning with the city, the approval of our plan to have 12 residential units, uh, which is approximately a five-to-seven minute walk there, is a, is a perfect complement, sort of like of, uh, a, a, a perfect residential bookend to that commercial development. Nonetheless, we did not speak with him. We received a letter last week, which you have. Uh, the plans that we're putting forward, as you can see, they have two buildings. One is a seven-unit building, which is in the rear, and then the other is a five-unit building, which is up front onto Willie Street, uh, and that comprises 12 units. We have parking, uh, we're short five spaces for parking. What we had proposed was that we would build in, in the city's right-of-way and place the improvements in there for five parking spaces, which includes the granite curbing. The, the inclusion or the development, uh, at the applicant's cost to build up those spaces, uh, is a benefit to the city, and by doing so, we're not decreasing the width of Willie Street whatsoever. It was a concern that was expressed in the letter that the heavy trucks would be a danger. Well, we did a curve analysis there, a turn, a turn analysis, a sweep analysis that shows that the trucks can make that turn safely. What we propose, so in effect, those parking spaces, which will be city spaces, are recessed. They, they go from the edge of pavement right now into the lot, so there's no decrease whatsoever in the width of that, of Willie Street at that point. Sometimes I think you can go by there now and you'll see cars parked over there, and they're parked along the grass and croaching on the public way there. With respect to the construction of those lots, that won't take place. Now, the design review of this was vetted by the city, uh, and the Jess Wilson, who's the urban design planner, in the comments that she presented, she stated that the application for 4-8 Wigan and 153 Willie is a smart approach to developing a highly challenging site. In addition, she said she liked the design where the parking was in the back. She stated in her comments that the addition of 12 townhouse-style market-rate housing units will help the city in the missing middle housing units that is contributing to the housing crisis. Overall, I'm quoting her, I think this is a strong proposal and will, uh, activate, uh, a long, underutilized site. When you come up to this site and you take a look at it, you see that it is unsightly, that it is a hill that is embedded with bedrock. Matt Hammer of Lamplex will go over the site and will go over, uh, the proposed development, but essentially, that hill has to be removed in order to develop these sites on the lot. It will be a challenging build. We intend to work with the neighborhood on it, uh, but it's gonna entail, uh, a very costly, costly retaining wall in the rear of the property and on the side of the property in order to accomplish that. The developer, and you've heard it many times, how we stand in front of you, that we need the number of lots to make it work. I've done it myself, well, when we have this site and talking to the developer, we do need those 12 sites, those 12 units. And those 12 units were, again, those are supported by the city in their comments to us. The, many times when we come in to the board and we ask for variance, uh, we may ignore some of the statutory requirements for variance. Uh, one of them being that special hardship owing to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures affecting the land, but not affecting the zoning district. You can see when you're standing there in the topography and you see that elevation, well, we're gonna have to take that hill out, and it's filled with bedrock, we're gonna have to blast. So we see that that requirement is met through the challenges of the site and that a variance would be warranted. Furthermore, we talk about the public good in the statute. Uh, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. No doubt that there will be arguments against that by the opposition. I have to point to you the comments from the city that talk about the public good being satisfied by this development. I go back to the comments of Jessica Wilson that states that the addition of 12 townhouse-style market-rate housing units will help the city fill the missing middle of the housing that is contributing to the housing crisis. It's a strong proposal and will develop an underutilized site. I can go back to comments going back to March of 2021, in which the urban planner at the time was Mr. Joseph Genowitz, uh, the, when we made the application for the zoning change. It was stated that the current proposal would put the subject properties all in one residential district, meaning when we did the zoning change, all of those would be in one residential district, being the UMF. And the ability by doing that so we could develop it as a residential lot, and that the property at this time and at that time was in the acre redevelopment plan, it was viewed upon as favorable that we would be able to bring these properties back to a viable tax-generating use for the city, and it would be done by the developer and not needed to be done by the city. Now, I see that as a benefit of the public good, and of course, the intent of the zoning being satisfied without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent of the zoning, well, I go back to the comments before that we have with respect to changing the zoning, that all these lots would be urban multifamily so that it could be developed. It was, it was recommended to the city council that they all be urban multifamily so that it be, be developed, and that's what makes this possible, so that we could go ahead and develop this. So I would state to you that, you know, we do have the grounds for a variance. Uh, it states that it fits with the neighborhood, uh, and it, it contributes to the housing counts in the City of Lowell, uh, it contributes to the tax base. I have an additional letter from the Deputy Director, Ivani Baez-Rose, uh, who submitted a letter that said she wrote in support of this development, um, that there's, the development of this area into housing is consistent with the existing acre urban renewal plan, the existing site is an underutilized piece of property which adds a little value to the surrounding neighborhood, as it currently is. The City of Lowell and surrounding region experienced a significant shortage of available housing opportunities, and the construction of 12 new units is another step towards addressing this important community need. So, um, I'd like to have Matt go over the particulars of the site, but you'd see that the, make the argument to you that it's an appropriate site for variance, given the topography, given the benefit of the city, and the fact that this will not derogate the intent of the zoning ordinance on that basis. So Matt, if you want to go ahead and go through the site?
Thank you, Counsel.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell. So here's the parcel here. It's a collection of three parcels. This parcel here is the parcel being purchased from the City of Lowell, and these are the two parcels owned by Lin Lowell LLC, the three collectively comprised of approximately 15,000 square feet. This is Stutton Street, dead ends and takes and turns into Willie Street here, and then you have Wigan Street here. Uh, Wigan Street is a pretty steep hill, if everyone's been up, um, Wigan. The, uh, Wigan also is, um, is, um, is, um, is not that wide in terms of the width of that street. If you can notice, Willie's approximately twice as wide. Excuse me?
Just ensuring that the participants tonight can see it on the, can, it's on this TV as well, sir. Can you see either one? Okay, great, thank you. And I'll always have that turned around in a few minutes as well.
This is essentially a hill, um, comprised mainly of bedrock, um, and it flows down in this direction, uh, here, down to this area of, uh, the intersection of, uh, Dutton The proposed development comprises of 12 units. Um, we were able to, um, situate the two buildings on the site, with seven units back here in the rear, and five units here in the front. The site essentially steps down from the rear down to Willie Street, and there's a, uh, primary entrance located here on Willie Street. Each unit, um, has a parking garage in all of the units, and the, these seven units have an, um, exterior parking space here, and these five units have, uh, a garage with the additional parking space, which is gonna be located, uh, out in, uh, Willie Street, even though, um, they're not gonna be assigned at this moment. The intent is to provide the five parking spaces out here because they're little used now, in that it's likely that those would be available for these five units, um, located here. There'll be a, a fairly sizable, uh, improvement, uh, done out here in this, in Willie Street with the creation of these five spaces and an entire, uh, sidewalk area that's currently not there now. What happens is, when you come out of these units, they'll be at the sidewalk level on Willie Street. If you... If you look at this architectural elevation, does everyone have a copy of this? This is showing the door access to the units on the sidewalk side of Willie Street here, and they stagger down the hill on Willie Street. So Willie slopes down to Dutton, and that's showing the staggering units along Willie Conversely, with the seven units doing the same thing, they stagger down with the drive that's coming up to access those units. These seven units will also have patio areas outside the back of those units as well, and those are shown here. And there's a wall here at the largest point, I believe it's six feet, and it tapers down to nothing over here. And then there's small retaining walls here to, to adjust the grades from the, this is a Colonial Gas facility that's next to this development right here. Across the street, there's an automotive business, and next to the site, there's a Habitat for Humanity development here, and there's a multifamily development in the rear. The project's going to be obviously serviced with sewer water and drainage. And that's the initial presentation for them.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Perrin, Chairman Perrin, also, we, in part of the conditions of the site plan decision, we offered to provide a crosswalk. We'll have that decision in discussions with D P D. One other element of this here, which I think is important, because it was asserted in some of the comments of the opposition, that the plan, the site is too small. This urban multifamily, the lot area per dwelling unit is 1,000 square feet per lot, per residential dwelling unit, and we're proposing 12 units on a 15,000 square foot And we'd appreciate your support.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Hammer. That being said, I'd like to open up public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Alan Kazanjian. I represent my company, Kazanjian Enterprises.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I first heard about this petition maybe three or four weeks ago, when we planned to come to the zoning board of appeals. We got notice from the Z B A and also the planning board. Talked to Mr. Theodore this morning. He did reach out to me, because we did send a letter into you folks. We were out of town for the planning board meeting, so, on a family matter, so I could not be there. So I did talk to Mr. Theodore today, and he mentioned to me that this was well over a year in progress, and I mentioned to him that it's a shame that you didn't notify me or my, or the others, so we can sit down and have some type of meeting to find out what our concerns were and get our input. And that never happened, as Mr. Theodore had mentioned. I'm a builder, as you folks know, and the first thing I do on any project I do in the city or anywhere I do go, I reach out to the neighborhood and find out where their concerns are and get their input, and see what, if we can meet their concerns within reason, and we go forward with the project. You know, we've been on Dutton Street for 72 years. My family's been in the Lowell for, since 1893 and paying taxes for well over 100 years in the city. And it's just a shame that when we called the city about two weeks ago to find out what the, what's happening with this project, the response was, we told them we were not in favor for it, and he said, "Well, the city needs housing." We understand the city needs housing, but it's got to be in a responsible way. I mean, we're not, we want to see something developed there, but not 12 units. Just give me one minute here, see my notes. We feel that 12 units is too much. They have parking for five cars that's on the street, and Mr. Hammer just mentioned that there are cars parked there now, so what's to say when that car leaves that's belonged to the house, that somebody else is not going to park there? I can see a big problem there, and maybe one of my tenants will park there without me knowing about it. So I can just see a big issue and a big problem, and I know Mr. Theodore said that, yeah, they meet the criteria for 1,000 square feet per unit, but they don't have enough parking. So they don't meet the criteria, because they don't have the parking. I feel it will be a detriment to the neighborhood. Plus, there's a loft on the third floor that at some point they can convert into a bedroom, and then it might be a bedroom where you might have another vehicle that, you know, might live there. And another point I have, if somebody's going to visit this, this community, where is somebody going to park? There's no parking for any type of visitors, so whether you're going to park and someone's blocked someone's driveway, or blocked my driveway, or one of the tenants, I really think it's a big problem. I'm willing to work with these people. I wish they came to me right, right from the start. I would have sat down with them and tried to work with them, and there's a possibility of, and also that driveway coming out of, onto Dutton Street, there's heavy traffic coming down that driveway, and that, I think it's a blind driveway with a tree there and parking right there, you're not going to see the people coming down from Willie Street. And I can see some type of problem where it might be a, an accident or some child getting hurt, and I don't want to see that. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name's Peter Maloney. I'm a friend of Alan Kazanjian's, and he asked me to look at these plans. I worked in the city engineers for 30 years. I looked them over. There's no stormwater remediation on it that I saw. We're spending millions of dollars in the city to separate it. What are you going to do?
Sir, you, sir, you can ask through me, and I, you can't, yeah, so, if, Mr. Hammer, if you can address the stormwater concerns, which was one of my concerns as well?
Yeah, so we've had two meetings with the stormwater team related to this project. Mike Store down at wastewater, and the stormwater gets conveyed into two catch basin systems and then gets conveyed to the city combined sewer system.
Thank you. Sir, if you, if we would please come to and address it through the board?
No remediation at all? You're not going to take care of any stormwater?
Yeah, we are. We're going to do total suspended, yeah, total suspended solids. We have, we have ledge, so we can recharge into the ground. And the city engine, city stormwater team directed, or I have my conversations with Mike Store.
Right.
Down at wastewater.
So the people that live here are going to pay for this afterwards? They're going to have to pay a fee?
Sir, I would, I would request, respectfully request for the third time, if you bring your questions to the board, you cannot have direct conversation with the business.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't know if you heard me.
Okay, no, I didn't.
If you provide me with a list of questions, we can certainly go through them.
Sure.
So, we talked, you've, I believe, and if you're satisfied with that answer, to stormwater.
One other thing I'd like to say, on the side of the lot, there's a piece of land that looks like it's part of Wigan Street, and it looks like they're grading it. It's not on their lot. Who owns this lot, Matt? On Wigan Street?
Are you talking about in this area?
Yes, right there.
Yeah, that's the city of Lowell.
Did the city of Lowell give them permission to regrade the street?
Yeah.
They did, okay.
So the city of Lowell, the engineering department submitted a full set of comments related to the project. We've had a conversation with the city engineer department, the city engineer and the city engineers department, related to this project about the improvements out here in Willie and the associated grading with the project.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes. Good evening, Dave Willett, president and founder of the Acre Neighborhood Group Action. I just have some questions. I only found out a couple of days ago myself. How you doing? And, hi, gentlemen. One was the snow storage. I'm looking at the thing, there's a little sliver at the end of the driveway, has it bent right there, and there's another little sliver at the end of it, and looking at all the open space compared to have these two, I don't know how all that snow, it is New England, could ever fit just in those two spots. Dumpster area, I don't really see one where the dumpsters are going to go. As far as street parking, I went over to take a picture of the plans that are supposed to be, you know, put at the site, and there's a big plan there. I had to double park at about the same time here, about three days ago, because I couldn't reach there, because there was already cars parked in that same exact area that you're talking. If you go there right now, more than likely, there's cars parked there. Talking to double park. Park there now. Also, I don't see much green space, because if there's children over there, and there probably will be with all those units, it's very, very tight, and I know, I always see where they say the third floor is an office, then when it comes time to sell them, the real estate's saying, "Oh, yeah, we have a third bedroom on the top floor," and it changes as soon as the, as soon as it's needed. But, so if you put that many children over there, which there will be, where are they going to play? And then if they come down that hill, right there, there's a lot of heavy traffic, concrete trucks, tow trucks, there's going to be quite a bit of traffic, so I don't know where anybody's going to sit out and to enjoy themselves. The other five units are so tight that even if a car's parked in front, nobody can come and go. So if you're over there and you order a pizza, you order this, everybody gets an Uber now or this, so if anybody's parked this way and somebody else wants to pull out, there's none, that's how tight the project is there. And it's a really steep grade. So, today I came down Wiggins, and I got a Cadillac Escalade, and it's long, and so my nose was hitting the ground when I was coming down Wiggins when I touched Willie Street, just about, and I'm high off the ground. So if you go further down in Willie, and you're getting closer to Dutton Street, the grade is constantly going down, so that means the top unit here, because I don't see a retaining wall along the edge of Wigan Street, so that means it's going to have the topical grade that it does now, which the road is right there, so if you go from the top of that road to the bottom here, that's over 30 feet, that's above these window shades right here, from one end of the thing to the other. It looks nice and flat on that picture, but it's going to be like that coming out. So again, with the water, which they just brought up, when it rains, that's going to be a waterfall coming off that hill right there. I mean, just picture, you can see the height difference. And also the stormwater remediation, that means if it's going into, I'm surprised that they are allowing it to go into the storage, into the catch basins there, because that goes straight to the treatment plant, so that means all that water will be treated by the gallon over there, before we put it in the Meramec also, and the state has already made it clear, it's mandated to the city that we should have stormwater separation, and it's part of an ongoing project that the city is doing, so I can't see to hinder that by adding more, as where at the other end, they're trying to stop that. Then there's also 12 market rate units, that's not workforce or help for the people that are struggling market rate. We need housing for first time home buyers, low income. Because I worked with Habitat Next Door when we did that one, yes, they had to blast some, yes, they had to do some, but they still kept it in the character of the neighborhood. The only one, when I see the character of the neighborhood now that they're talking about is that it's overcrowding with not enough parking, and that's what we're trying to get away from in that neighborhood. We don't want that character of the neighborhood to be that anywhere. And just look at Habitat Next Door, he's absolutely right, great place, it was for first time home buyers, it was made affordable so everybody could afford it. This is market rate, and you know what the market rates are right now. Building footings are in the right of way, I believe, and so if, you'll need council approval, usually if, you know, to dig it up, because the footings will actually be in the city, on city property. Really steep grade, so tight cannot even fit another. So, just, those are just a few ideas, a few questions that I do have, is that, remember, there's got to be people that living here. They got to get up every day, they got to work on this, and, I mean, God forbid you're a kid and you drop your ball, it's going to be down on Dutton Street someplace, because this is just going to, with that steep grade. So, gentlemen, I thank you all much for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is David Gray, 33 Briar Ave, Lowell, Mass. I actually work in the area. I work for Kazanjian Enterprises. I'm in that area all the time, every day. I travel it every day. It's a very, very crowded area. I mean, if you're ever going down Rock Street in the morning at rush hour, coming into work, it's very hard to get, to get two-way traffic down Rock Street anymore with the cars parked on both sides of the road. And I've, I've been down that road for years now, and it's getting worse and worse, and I'd hate to see this happen around this corner on Willie Street, now that they're adding some parking on that street also. It's a very, heavy vehicle use in that area is constant. You have, you have a concrete plant, you have dumpster companies, you have, you have National Grid, next to it's always heavy vehicle use of that, of that roadway right there on that turn. I have three questions through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Hammer. The first one is the, where they're going to regrade this, the city property, who is going to be responsible to maintain that?
I'm going to write them down, sir, and then we'll go through. I have all your questions. We'll go through each and every one of them.
Would be, is the, for fire trucks, is that, can you get a fire apparatus up into that area and safely turn it around and get it back down the hill to, you know, to service those units in case of a fire? And the third one would be the snow storage. It doesn't seem that there's any snow storage on the site, and I did see the D P D comments that they're going to have to take, remove the snow, you know, that they can't maintain on site. But in a heavy snowstorm, that's, as we can all see, that's not going to happen. They're not going to be removing snow or anything, they're going to be pushing it down the driveway right into that, that corner, which is a dangerous corner as it is. So, I mean, Mr. Theodore said that, you know, you meet all the requirements, but one of the main requirements that I see is the parking, you don't have enough parking in this area for this site. And I think a good use would be seven units would be, would look great on that, on that site. You get rid of that other building, you have seven units, you have plenty of room. Solves a lot of issues, so it's, we're not looking, I'm not looking to say that I'm against the developing on that, on that property, but they're trying to squeeze way too much onto the property. It's, it's just, doesn't even seem feasible, and I don't even know what the heights of those buildings are, but I can imagine coming around that corner and looking at a wall of building, you know, and it's just, it just doesn't look like it's really going to fit in very good with the neighborhood character down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming on. Counselor, Mr. Hammer, if we could go through some of these questions raised by, so if we could, if we could just?
Sure, and touching upon the, Mr. Gray's comments on the, how the fire department would work with respect to this. With the circulation through the departments, we never got comments back from the fire department. That is explicitly the reason why in the planning board decision that they placed in there that the final project is subject to the Lowell Fire Department approval. That was placed in the, the planning board comment, decisions as a, as a requirement. It was indicated that we had limited snow storage space, and we had proposed that we would remove the snow and make that a condition. These would be set up, of course, as a condominium, that we would be responsible to remove it, and of course, we have to do the best, the best of our ability to remove it, and we would adhere to that. I believe, I'm not sure I remember correctly the, the other comment.
We have, it was concerns about dumpster and trash removal? We could just?
Well, I don't know. Do we, we have a site on there that, yeah, the, we'll have it picked up by, yeah, as Matt said, by individual, individual trash container units.
So there'll be no dumps, commercial dumps, is on site?
I don't believe there's a room for it.
I believe one other concern, if you could speak to it, it would be storm, stormwater. Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, so I just spoke about stormwater, how we've met with the stormwater team on this project on two separate occasions, and we've had a separate meeting with the city engineers department related to this project.
Is there any conversations or comments related to the amount of water runoff? Is there any conversations or comments related to the amount of water runoff into the city?
Yep. The runoff is, I can walk through that with the board if you'd like.
If you would, it would be helpful for me. So just to clarify what has been brought up, and then what has been cited and stated by the city.
Sure, the drainage heads in this direction, there's two catch basin systems located here at the bottom of the hill. That gets collected into a storm system here that connects to an existing storm drain in the, in Dutton Street. There was a question also about the grading.
Yeah, the, who, yeah, I believe the question regarding the grade was, on the city side, who's going to be responsible for maintaining that? And is there, is there a document in place?
There's no document in place, but we can make that as a condition that would be incorporated into the condominium rules and regulations.
Okay, if you could just speak to that regrading issue and...
Yeah, so all of this work here will be in city property. So, you know, we're anticipating that the city would maintain this. If the condo association wanted to take care of this, I don't think that that would be a problem.
No, I, I would anticipate that the association would take care of that as a, as a further improvement to make with respect to the project for the city.
In respect to snow storage, you can see the green areas are available space for snow storage in terms of most of the smaller storms. If there's a large storm event, and there's the need to have the snow removed from site, then that could be incorporated in the homeowners association documents. But you can see that there is snow storage, snow storage here in front of the units and along here, as well as along the walkway as well. One of the comments was, you know, were people going to enjoy being outside of the units? These units here all have patios here, and then, you know, there's areas here and here where there's some open space on this project as well to have some area, it's not, this is a hill, so it's not going to be conducive to having a field, nice flat area, you know, but considering the circumstances of working with this terrain, this was the best configuration that we had.
Thank you.
And then, there was a question about the footings in the city right-of-way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that's right here. So in many circumstances, buildings that are right up on the right-of-way, we would then need to either get an easement for that footing to be within that area here, or it would be a footing that would basically be L-shaped so that it wouldn't be within the right-of-way. But that is, that is achievable. In two different circumstances, either getting the easement or the foundation design for that frost wall. In terms of the fire department, fire department has full access, both of these buildings will be sprinkled. And the, the nicer way, the nice way that this is situated is, is that there could be two plastic totes in each of the buildings, in the garages, and then when a private pickup comes, they could bring those totes out to the front of their garages and have those picked up.
So all trash removal will be self-stored and removed from the inside of the property?
That's correct, yeah.
I believe I got them all. That being said, any others wishing to speak in opposition? Public hearing is still open.
Just based on what I just heard with the trash, so you're going to have to bring a trash truck up that steep hill into the project that doesn't look like it could turn around, so you're going to have to back that trash truck back down that, it's a very, very dangerous situation. And I see there's outdoor space for the, for the seven units, but there isn't for the five units. So it seems like all the problem is with the five units, that that's, seems that that's what's wrong with the site is those five units, and it looks like you need the five parking spaces to get those five units. So it seems like the troubles with the site is with that five-unit building, which seems to be putting five units too much on the site, but it looks like a great site, with the exception of those five units. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that the individual storage through you, Mr. Chairman, will be kept inside, and there are garages, one car garages for those five units, which are there presented along Willie Street.
Have you, do you have any feedback on the size of the trash receptacle that'll be coming? I know they have...
Yeah, I couldn't...
If there are concerns about, you know, the turnaround and things of that nature, it is kind of tight.
With respect to the truck you're speaking of?
Yeah, I think we have in the past...
We'd have to get you some information on that as a condition.
One other project, I recall that we made, there was concerns about the radius and the turn, so instead of a full trash truck going, they brought those quarter trucks down, similar to what you see at the Housing Authority. Okay, thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Theodore mentioned about a variance, the hardship because of the condition of the property, but to me, it's an economic hardship. It's not a hardship where he can put seven, seven units over there with no problem at all, but he's just looking to make a profit like any other builder. So why should the neighborhood suffer because this individual wants to make a profit? And that's, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. One final comment, sir.
One final comment.
One final comment.
And I'm just agreeing too, that I'm not against it, we need the housing, everything's great, 12 units is just way too many, just trying to get a handle on it so that it's not a detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. That being said, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Any other comments at this time, Counselor?
No, we would like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the board, Dennis.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to say, this is quite a feat of engineering to get these 12 units to fit here. And I think that that's evident by the comments, that it's a lot on the site. That being said, we are in a crisis for this kind of housing. These are small townhouses, these are not grandiose townhouses, and they're two-bedroom townhouses with an office. I understand that that office often gets interpreted as something else down the road, but there certainly are that mid-range type of housing that we're looking for in the city for sure. And we have some of, but we don't have enough of. My first question is the grading of this access drive. It looks like it's something in the range of six or seven percent. Do you have a feel for what it is on the plan?
I could, I could tell you what it is.
Sure.
So in this section here, we're going from 102 to 106 over the course of, so that's four feet over 30 feet. So I can, I can tell you what that is. So that's 10% approximately coming up through the first section there.
Yep. Okay. And that's similar to what you find in a ramp in a parking garage? I think those are maximum 10% slopes as you're going up. So that is a steep slope, but it's doable, it's done all the time, but it's still a very steep slope.
Yep.
So you've, you've achieved the limits, I think, on the engineering side of accomplishing what is done, but is certainly done at, at the, at the extreme end of things. Okay. So it would be, it would be doable, but it would be still a challenge. The number of units, 12 units, I think you opened your discussion about that, could you just kind of repeat why the 12 units is the number that we're looking at here versus 10 or eight or something other than 12?
In, in all the preliminary discussions with DPD, they were presenting to us to have, to put in 12 units, they, they wanted to have a sizable number of units there, and that has always been the number. We had a, we even had an old preliminary plan that had a building that had six and six. That was the original plan, was six in the rear and six up front. And we found out that that was not buildable. That was the original plan going back to that discussion. So prior to that, the applicant was looking at, you know, not doing a zoning change, going ahead and putting up a couple of units in the garage, I believe, and the city wanted to make its best effort and suggested that we go forward with the zoning change and build out 12 units.
So that was not really driven by economics as much as driven by the city?
Planning, city planning.
Trying to achieve a number that would be a density that they felt would be supported by the land area, and just had to be proven out by engineering from a site standpoint, if you will?
Which, which we believe we did.
Okay, okay, all right. Then you made, there's some comments about the green space and the patios. So the five units up front don't have patios to speak of, but we have seven units in the back that have patios?
That's correct.
So I, I think that's a generous term, some of those retaining walls are relatively high, and the width of those spaces are less than six feet. So you have a very narrow kind of space there with a wall that is, I don't know, six or eight feet beside you in some of those units?
Six at the tallest.
Six at the tallest, okay.
The end unit has six, and then it gradually tapers down to no wall needed as you work your way towards Wiggins.
Yeah. You accomplished the outdoor space, but again, it's very, very...
Limited.
Limited, we'll say limited. Okay, thank you for that word. All right. And then the height of the buildings. Again, in order to solve these grading issues with those front five buildings, we have the garage coming in behind it, and then on the face, we have an exposed foundation wall, and then we have an entry door that's almost like a half-grade, half-level below the first-floor level. So some of those elevations go from a three-story garage, first, second, three-and-a-half-story building.
So there'll be three and a half, yep.
Almost feel like four and a half, not quite, but, you know, almost, kind of close to four.
Yeah, so six is allowed, these will be three-and-a-half-story buildings.
Again, you're right at the edge, you know? There's a lot of things you're doing here that take us to this zone of, boy, oh, boy, there's a lot going on here.
Well, so, you know, it's a challenging site, but we figured out the solution to it. We've vetted, we've collaborated with the city along the way, going to the stormwater team at the very beginning, acknowledging that we're not going to be able to infiltrate on the site, you know, and going through the necessary steps to ensure that this development would be approved by the city municipal departments.
I think that that's great. I wish, Dylan, we had a representative from the planning department making a case as to why the driver of this project, to have 12 units here is important versus 10 or eight, and basically making a better case as to the density, because I think the density for the neighbors and for us is, for myself at least, is kind of a, it's amazing to see how well you engineered the site, but like I say, all of these points that you're doing here are right at the edge of reasonable engineering levels, if I can say that. It almost kind of pushes the envelope a little harder than I'm used to, for sure. So I kind of would like to see a little more understanding as to the rationale for us to have 12 units here versus a smaller number.
Can I make one comment through you, Mr. Chairman? Another driving force of this is the fact that city has made the, with respect to 153 Willie Street, that property is surplus property. It was taken in a tax-taking in 1939, and has been dormant, underutilized lot since then. And as part and parcel of this, in addition to the improvements that we're making with respect to constructing the five parking spaces in the public right-of-way, that we are also paying the city $55,000. That's for that lot. So that's another driving force behind this. That's a component of this. It's a, I'm just saying, it's a little different than saying why driving the 12 units, but we're also paying $55,000 for that, for that, approximately a 4,700 square-foot lot, which is a benefit being conferred upon the city.
Okay. All right. Before this meeting, there was a Zoom call that the planning department, I think, organized for Community Housing Coalition, and we're talking, or what was being presented was a case for housing and why housing is so important, and housing that might be smaller in size. Now, these units are not very large. These units have, what, a 20-by, I think it's 20-by-16 footprint? They're relatively small in area, they're very tall, so all of the space is vertical, the footprints are all relatively small. So I think you've achieved the efficiency. Like I say, you've done, you've done all the, all the tricks to get this to be as efficient on the site to accomplish the 12. I just, I just need a little more understanding of why it needs to be 12, and how that number is so critical to our, our use of the site here. I don't know how to get that other than, like you said, that that was being driven by the planning department. I don't know if we...
And, and all the early preliminary discussions that go back to when Joseph Genowitz was the urban renewal director, back then it started with, and also with Patty Luken, who's still involved in this, that we're working with her to remove this, the city-owned lot from the, from the Department of Housing and Community Development, to remove it from the acre plan.
Okay.
All those factors worked together and contributed to the fact that we wanted to, we all agreed to have 12 units.
Is it possible to have less than 12? It tends to be a better number.
The, and my client, Mr. Phil Briansi, he's not here tonight, he's ill, he's looking at it on Zoom. We had discussed it with him, and it was his opinion, in order to make it work, he needed the 12 units. I'm going back to something which is mentioned by Mr. Kazanjin, that economics... that economics is not a hardship, and I have to disagree, that I'm reading that if we don't, aren't able to get the variance for the parking, the variances are in different things, we're asking for variance for the parking. If a little, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So from my discussions with him, they can't go forward on this project without meeting the 12 units. And that would be, in this particular case, because of the soil conditions, the topography, that is a financial condition. And that's in the statute of chapter 48. I'm quoting the legal standard.
Okay.
We are doing our best to accommodate through this design that we have, to accommodate everything that can practically be done to make this work.
Right, right, right. Okay. I imagine the site costs are enormous. I imagine that without doing 12, it's hard to get the site to make sense. I don't know how this even makes sense with 12, to tell you the truth, but if it does, it does. Okay, I would just like to, as a, going forward here, if the board were to move forward, that we adopt the eight conditions by the planning board as the conditions that we would also use. The first one is applicants shall file an A and R plan to merge the three subject lots. Second, the applicant shall address potential parking concerns related to building. One, in the condo association documents. Third, the applicant shall remove any snow which cannot be stored on-site to an off-site location. Four, the applicant shall comply with the City of Lowell Stormwater Team requirements. Five, the applicant shall comply with the requirements set forth in the March 11, 2022 City Engineering Department memo. Six, the final project shall be subject to Lowell Fire Department approval. Seven, final landscaping plan shall be subject to DPD approval. And eight, the applicant shall work with the Lowell Historic Board to address windows and articulation between units.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, the Historic Board has final jurisdiction over this for design, exterior design and approval. We were waiting to go in front of the Historic Board. As a matter of fact, I think we were given some examples today. Did you hear those? Please do, Matt. Sure, go right ahead. We were given some examples today from staff as to the articulation in breaking up the units so that there's some, you know, a little bit of dimension and depth between them. When looking at them, they provide a lot, a far better site plan or sight line to view it. And these were something, I think this is in... Yeah.
That's wonderful.
So at the planning board meeting, Sinead made some comments about the articulation of the vertical elements of the buildings to help break it up. And we said, you know, that's great. We can most certainly change the exterior elements of the building to break up the front facade. And then DPD provided this elevation. That's an example of a housing development in Rosendale that they thought would be appropriate for a recommendation to the Historic Board for design review. It just gives you an idea how the front facade could change with the different elements of siding.
Sure.
So.
That would make a wonderful streetscape along Willie Street, yeah. Fabulous. I imagine the views from these units are going to be spectacular. I know just going on the site.
The view on top of Wigan Street is absolutely amazing.
Stunning, yeah, yeah. All right. I have no further comments, but I just would like to end with, I wish I had more input from the planning department regarding this push for the 12 units and why that's such a critical piece for the city to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have so many notes here, so forgive me. The notes that I've made here this evening, as well as upon my initial site review. I offer these comments with the utmost respect. I drove up Wigan Street, parked my car in the little clearing there on the left as you go up the hill, and I walked through those readings. I actually did it. For the life of me, I don't know how this project fits there. Absolutely, and so I said to myself, I read all the comments, of course, and as I've always indicated, I put great, great trust in our DPD staff, my colleagues here on this board and those on our fellow board, the planning board. And I read their comments. And again, for the life of me, I don't see this project working there. Now, you may have satisfied some of the engineering problems. Dennis called them tricks. Engineering tricks. Well, I don't mean to use that in a negative way, but you may have solved some things with some engineering trickery. But how about the functionality of it? First thing I wrote on my notepad when I went there was why 12? Why 12? As far as I'm concerned, that's a totally arbitrary number. Now, you quoted, you cited some evidence as to where the 12 originated. And it's in a desire to increase our housing stock. But the problem we have in the city, it's not just increasing our housing, it's affordable housing. Affordable housing all over this country is the crisis. I see this project as too dense. I do agree that you said this evening that the property was underutilized. I absolutely agree with that. But I believe what you propose to do over utilizes the space. So to try to solve one hardship by creating another, I believe is no solution at all. The, it's a very congested area. I mean, you know, and it's a light industrial area. There's no doubt about the industrial traffic, the trucks to go by there. The on-street parking, that solves nothing as far as I'm concerned. The snow problem? You talk about when there's a light, when there's light snow, sure, but what about a heavy storm? They're going to go in and truck that? That's not going to happen. How about the trash pickup? How does your trash pickup plan, how does that work?
You'd have a private company with the receptacles that would come up and pick up the...
And the truck's going to be able to access the property? Like right in, would they go into the courtyard?
They would be going in.
And?
They would be, they would be going in into the interior of the property and the trash bins would be left outside of the garage and they'd be picking them up.
Okay, all right. Now, one of the other notes I had was you showed the original plan, I think it was six and six?
That's correct.
How come that wasn't doable, but seven and five is?
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm going to assure you, Mark, there's no trickery here, okay?
Well, like, you know, come on.
That's a word, that's a word we don't use.
All right, all right. But we didn't mean it in a negative way, but...
No, I know.
And both of those plans are 12 units.
Right.
So this plan, when I saw this plan, I didn't prepare this plan. No offense to the engineer who did. Here's Willie here. So if you might put it in relation to how our plan's shown. Here's Willie in Wigan. For some reason, they had the entrance coming through National Grid's property and then coming out onto Wigan. We realized that, yeah, it lays out. They didn't have the, you know, there's a horizontal problem on this property with having a, you know, a unit, you know, a garage within the unit, a space outside the garage, and then to have an access drive, you essentially don't get anything more than seven. That's how... I don't know if, they might have had an agreement with National Grid to do this plan at the time. I don't know. But that's how, when you take this horizontal space here, you really don't end up with any units at all unless you acquire the five down on the street. So what we did is, like we normally would do, we come up with this preliminary plan. We go in and speak with the city. We talk to the different components of the city staff. And we say, listen, before we go and do the full architectural drawings for the entire development, which are quite involved, and we go and fully engineer out the entire project, is the city amenable to these improvements out in the street to supplement those additional five spaces? And that's how this plan comes to be. We don't go and start fully engineering out the site, hiring the architects, you know, to do these detailed drawings, which you see, without this being a component of the project that the city would fully embrace. And that's how we come up with this layout.
What's the distance between the two rows of houses?
So it's 35 feet.
And what is the distance between the rear of the top row of houses to the existing structure that's back there, the butter?
So in this location, it's 5.1 feet. And in this location, it's approximately 10 feet. And then this is the, that building on that adjacent lot. And Mr. Briere, I've walked across that rock pile back there, too. That hole, all of that rock's coming out, all of it.
So what?
None of it's going to be there.
Okay, so what retains all the soil in the rear of the property and along Wigan Street?
So I'm going to explain it to you. So what happens is, you understand like a walkout foundation, whereas in the back of your house, it might be at grade, in the front of the house, it might be eight or 10 feet up, right?
Yep.
Basically, what happens is, these are at street level coming out. You jump up eight to nine feet to 10 feet to this side. And you come over to here, and then you jump up another eight to 10 feet. So it goes down in sections as you work your way down. But this entire bit of rock is going to be completely removed. And it's going to be removed to the point where they'll do it in shelves, where it'll be, the rock will be removed five feet below the grade of the street here.
Where were the retaining walls?
Right here, right here, and right here.
Along the entire rear?
Half of the rear.
How tall is that retaining wall?
Six feet here. There's an existing wall there now, by the way. But here it's six feet and it goes down to nothing over to here. So the foundation walls end up being your retaining walls that work you up to the grade in the back in essentially three different manners. One is here. The second is as you grade across here. And then to the back. And we're proud of this design without the trickery.
Well, you should be.
But what happens here...
You should be proud because, you know, it was called an engineering feat. That's great. That means that you're, you know, you're good at what you do. That doesn't mean it fits the neighborhood and fits the law. It doesn't.
It's not that complicated, the way this went through. But the nice thing about this is, this is going to be a handicap compliant sidewalk here with these parking spaces here as well, which I thought was a great improvement to Willie Street in here. So, you know, it's urban living. It's a relatively short walk into the city from here. We're outside of that, you know, distance from the parking garages. But it fits in with the multifamily that's in and around here. My own opinion.
And I know you see challenges there, Mr. Briere. City DPD endorsed this, this project endorsed the number of units. So, you know, at the same time, I'd ask for your support.
Well, I understand that, that's what you're here for. Unfortunately, I can't lend that support. I think it's too dense a project. I've heard nothing here, unfortunately, to convince me otherwise.
Can I point out?
You fellows are before us quite often, which speaks to the respect that you've earned in your respective fields. Very good at what you do. I was surprised that there wasn't more outreach to the neighborhood. I thought that would have been something George, it's standard procedure.
I admit I was remiss on that. In my opinion, I should have done that. However, I thought that in developing this vacant lot, which serves no purpose for anyone, would have met support. And with respect to the density that you discuss, you don't approve this plan with respect to the density under the zoning ordinance in an UMF zone. It specifically says 1,000 square feet for every residential dwelling unit. So for 12 units in this 15,000 square feet, we meet the density.
I get it.
I don't think we can, when you look at it...
I've seen more projects, many projects shot down even though they meet that requirement.
I agree. I agree. But when you're looking at the hill, which is what we're looking at, when you walk back there, that's what you see. You see that hill. And essentially, we're going to be taking that down. It's hard to visualize the size of that lot as it currently exists. Engineering-wise, it's 15,000 square feet.
That's my difficulty. I don't envision...
So one of the things you might find that if you were to, if this wasn't the proposal with townhouses, is you might end up seeing a six-story building with an underground parking garage for this site for it to be developed. That's, in my mind, one of the only other alternatives for this site.
How about one row of six or seven? Didn't you say you paid $55,000 for the property?
No, no, no. We didn't pay $55,000 for the property. We're paying, we, if this is successful, we will be paying $55,000 to the City of Lowell to purchase a 47 square foot piece of property, which is specifically identified as 153 Willie Street. The client currently owns four and eight Wigan Street, and we're buying 153 Willie Street from the city as a condition if this all goes forward.
Okay, you've heard my concerns. I believe it is too dense a project. I see one row there. I'll, that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with the members here because I drove down there yesterday as well and it was quite hairy. There were cars already parked there and I just can't see how people can maneuver on, was it Wigan Street? It's, but as a member said, you have maxed out every inch of that property to try and make it work. It looks good on paper. Sometimes things legal may not always be right in some cases. I had the same questions. It's 12 units. That's for a small space. But in addition to all the schematics that's been brought up, I am an advocate of involving the neighborhood in these types of endeavors. the neighborhood in these types of endeavors. And I would think it would be crucial that the neighbors have a voice. I understand that Mr. Kusajin has a team here, but what about the other? You have Mr. Wolet who's here, and everyone just found out about this a few weeks ago. So that's one aspect of it. And I know that we try to utilize every inch, but one of the things I don't see, and maybe I'm getting blind, but, you know, especially, I'm concerned about the environment. I'm concerned about landscaping in a property like this. And I just see, I understand, you meet the criteria of 1,000 square feet per unit. And it's one car for each garage, correct? So is it only one person that's going to be in these units? Is it one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
They're all two-bedroom units. And the zoning provides for two parking spaces per unit. The units that are facing on Willie Street each have a garage, and they have one unit per residential dwelling, and that's what we're asking for, the variance. And I believe that this project would fit other similarly situated projects that requested Mind you, we're not asking for variances for the number of units on the site, even though that's part of the ongoing discussion here, because I, granted, I agree that it's difficult to take a look at it, to look at that lot, to fit in the number of units, how it's going to be done.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I should say, it is difficult trying to envision it, because it's just a piece of overgrown property. But, you know, I try to use the vision, and I try to ensure that, you know, I am impartial in any of these, you know, when applicants, you know, come to the board. And that's what I'm trying to be. But I have the same concerns, the fact that 12 units in this property, and because, as you mentioned, I believe you mentioned a few years ago, that this was the decision, 12 units. Well, things may have changed that, you know, from then to now, and, you know, population growth, I mean, there's more people around that street, you know, and it might not be as conducive to have 12 units. But I, again, I don't want to digress. I'm not saying no, I'm just, as Dennis said, you know, you... it has to be... I guess we would need more information. We would need to know why the Department of Planning says 12 units. And to make that work into that small space. But also, I also think that the conditions, the eight conditions that was discussed would be a criteria. But I would also want to suggest strongly that you have a meeting with the neighbors, with the abutis. Again, I am a pro... sorry, a proponent of getting the people that's affected in that area to be involved. It is great to get the blessings from the city, but it would also be nice to know that those who are impacted have a voice. And maybe they can be, you know, a good agreement, because you had no one here spoke in favor of, but you've had people here who's been, you know, not in favor. And I just think that that should be addressed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I don't want to belabor the issue. I have a lot of similar concerns to my colleagues and to the speakers tonight. Mr. Chairman, I think, in my opinion, so, you know, I would agree that this lot is, you know, an eyesore and a developed vacant, you know, something needs to go there. You know, I think, and Mr. Theodore, Mr. Hammer, you know, great presentation, very detailed, you know. You know, I think, for me as a kind of a layperson, I'm not, you know, we have a lot of land experts here, housing experts, lawyers, you know, all around us. DPD is a great resource. You know, I just, I think, for me, the 12 unit is what is difficult. I definitely support this in terms of, you know, housing, and we need more units and more, you know, housing stock to our inventory. You know, do I agree it's, should it be market rate, or, you know, first home buyer, or, you know, that's, you know, that's... And I also want to add that, you know, the investor, the person, you know, developed this lot and putting all this investment, I think it's, thank you, I think it's great. I really, I think it's gonna be a great benefit, a great addition to the neighborhood and to the city as a whole, you know, just to that neighborhood and financially and all that. I think what I'm stuck with is, it's the amount of units. You know, I've heard sometimes, you know, six is the number, 10, not 12, whatever it is. I just think, for me, it's, you know, if we can, the key thing is if we can scale back or downsize, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be more palatable to many people, not just the neighborhood, but, you know, I think overall, I think your client will see that, you know. I doubt that he will want, anyone will want someone to be that packed and condensed, living in that unit, whether, you know, a family or loved one, in kind of a tight, a tight setting like that, you know. And I'm also concerned with, you know, just overall parking, the acres, tougher parking. You know, I live in South Loeb, but my neighborhood really busts the acres, so parking is a premium there as well, so it's, you know, I think if we downsize, it would satisfy some of the parking concerns as well. So I think for me, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see it scaled down, the number smaller. For me to support it, me personally, but I think overall, I think something can be done, you know, like that lot can be developed, and I think it could be beneficial to the investor and to the neighbors and to the city as a whole, and, you know. So those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice-Chair. John?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. It's a tough one, it really is, and, you know, you certainly, I will say this, reviewing these when coming in, and like, based on the structure of the land and how you tried to set it up, it looks, I mean, I think you did a good job working with what you got. But I'm still coming back to a few things, and it's, the first thing is the trash pickup. And again, I understand it's gonna be private, it's gonna be picked up, but we get back to, will the truck come in to pick it up? How are we gonna get it out? Are we gonna back out? I guess the first question, Attorney Theodore, so I saw that first, the initial six-unit thing you had, and you had the straight shot all the way through from Colonial Gas or National Grid, if they let you in, I guess, or whatever, all the way out to Wigan Street, which would encompass the city's right away there. So looking at the new, looking at what's being proposed here, I understand we want to keep some green space, and I'm all for that, too, but trying to alleviate a lot of this other stuff, the traffic, the traffic as well as the trash pickup, why can't there be an exit entered on the city right away, the city right away on Wigan Street? Is there any reason why that can't be utilized there?
We looked at doing that. I guess you could have a connection there. It's just the hill is very challenging on that side, and it wasn't realistic. In fact, you couldn't make the turning radius to get onto Wigan there, or Willie, excuse me. Yeah, to Wigan, if you come out that section. So, yes, there could be a connection there. It just was not gonna be viable to make that, navigate that turn on that hill especially.
Yeah, okay. No, I mean, I only asked that, you know, Mr. Hammer, because you had those previous plans out there...
Yeah, we looked at it.
That had the exit out there, and we were talking about the trash pickup, and the rest of the thing, I was thinking like, well, why can't we keep that and let the trash, the trash truck is going in, then it's gotta turn around and come back out, or it's gotta back out, and it just kind of makes, kind of makes it a little bit, just troublesome. The other thing, and again, I understand there's a need of affordable housing, and the other thing that just kind of gets me on this, and again, I like the way it's everything's set up, but to the point of one of the, no, abutis, it's structured to, I see this, you got two bedrooms, two floors, two bedrooms, but then the third floor, which is an attic, which just, the way that the building's set up, especially on the top of it, where you have that little outlet with windows, it looks like it's inviting the possibility of a third bedroom being put in there. Even though, and I understand that the elevation on that is like, what, seven to eight feet or something, but it's just still enticing, it's very inviting to someone to...
The building code provides that, a room, whether they call it an attic or they call it storage, that a room that's provided that doesn't have any closet space at all, even can be labeled an office, and doesn't get counted in to the parking. So, I mean, that's always, that's always the case.
Yeah, but I'm thinking about it from the 12, from the perspective of the 12 units, and I understand, you're right, you're correct, Attorney Theodore. I'm just thinking from the perspective of 12 units, that you got all 12 that treats it as a three-bedroom, when the intention is a two-bedroom with a potential office space or nook or something to that effect, in that very dense neighborhood. It seems very inviting for some people, I would guess, but, like I said, this is a tough one, and I think, I certainly, too, would probably be in agreement, that I would like to see it scaled back. 12 units seems very dense. I, too, as well as Dennis, I'm very curious to know why the city, right off the bat, just thinks 12 units is fine on this, and who, I don't know, it just seems very... I understand the need of affordable, I understand the need for the housing, I understand the need of affordable housing, but it's, there's gotta be, there's some points where you just gotta be like, does this fit? And, yeah, you had a hardship, the land is certainly clear of that, with the structure, the topography of the land and the way it's set up. Public good for housing, I will give you that, I mean, the need for housing, but in the end, does this come back to the point of, is the intent for the zoning's gonna be satisfied with this particular, with this particular layout? And I think that's what I'm kind of struggling with, Attorney Theodore, so I don't know if that's something you can, I don't know, if you have an answer for, it's just kind of, and it's, if it scales down, I mean, I can kind of see it a little bit, but I understand the financial ramifications of, you know, to your client. So I guess I'm just, I mean, if you have something to speak to, is what your thoughts are intended, whether it's how this meets intent of zoning.
You know, I think when we come here to try to, you know, to represent developers, to try and do these projects here, we try to get consensus. We try to build consensus and get it from the board. Not every project that comes before the board is a slam dunk. You have to appreciate the comments that are provided. I would like the opportunity to come back, to continue this matter, to come back. We'll have a discussion, we'll meet with Mr. Kusajin, we'll see who else we need to discuss it with. We know that there have been other projects that have been approved in the neighborhood that are ongoing, that had the cooperation of the board. We'd like to be part of that in this area as well, and we would ask that we could continue it, and also possibly to provide some information that Mr. McCarthy brought up of the initial discussions that were made that discussed, that talked about 12 units. And also bring up some of the other concerns with respect to the trash pickup, how the trucks would be coming in and moving out and about. I think all of that is important. And so through you, Mr. Chairman, if we could pick a date to come back, give us sufficient time to talk, I think we'd need, I think, at least two meetings to come back.
Okay, so you'd be looking, before we go into that, I do, I do want to have my...
And I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that, are you, okay, Mr. Clerk. As always, Consular, consensus is, I think, always the key to success, and you have proven that. I do think, when I look, and my concerns, and we can follow these through, is a trash truck coming in and out. I do want to go over just a bit, and I don't want to belabor this because of a continuance, but when we look at those parking spots out front, the five designated parking spots, and you talk about the city, so the purchase of that parcel is a driving factor to, it's contributory to the success of this.
Well, we need to purchase that parcel at 153 Willie Street in order to compile these three to make it 15,000 square feet to work. Part of making that improvement there is our contribution, and anytime there's a site plan or variance or whatever, we always like to come in and give something back to the city. So notwithstanding, that's the business transaction of giving them the $55,000 for that lot, that was, you know, that's part of the agreement. But part of what we want to do from a site plan point of view is to build out those five spaces there, in, you know, at the same time, asking for a variance for five spaces. Now, those are five spaces that, you know, we can't tell you, I can't tell you that those are dedicated to the unit owners. We can, and we will be going and asking for parking permits, but that means a parking permit next door would be able to park there as well. It's challenging in that, it's an urban-dense environment, and that's part of, you know, the challenges of a city living, which is, we're not out in the suburbs.
Part of that process, to your point, is mitigation there, and I certainly understand that. I know we talked briefly about comments from the fire department. Was there anything in comments or conversations regarding fire lanes?
The application was sent to the fire department, the fire department didn't send...
Had no, had no comments or review. It's one of the, I just don't recall a project in front of us that doesn't have fire lanes, especially a residential complex to this point.
I think I can speak...
And if they make no comments, they made no comments, but...
You know, I'm not gonna speak for the fire department here.
No, neither can I, I just, I'm just saying that generally...
I can't say that, sorry, but when we have sprinkler systems, you have two roads going on either side, and we have an access drive.
I can only surmise that, you know, they are the professionals, that they have access front and back to fight fires. I guess I'll leave it at that, because I don't want to, that's not within my purview, but...
And I could look into, even though the grade would be coming down a little bit steeper, having that go through the Willie might solve some of those problems related to the trash. I think there are smaller trash vehicles that can come in to this site and navigate their way into backing into the areas in front of those garages if need be at certain times. We have a homeowners association where we can make those accommodations. But I was looking at the grades, even though it's a little steep coming down, we could have an exit that would be solely for fire trucks and trash trucks to come out onto Willie to help satisfy that concern.
It's just, you know, it's just something that sticks out, because it's always, it's always a prerequisite, if you will, and, you know, obviously, they understand that. The other thing, my other question was, and I know I read it somewhere, but what is the final height on each of these as they stagger down at the highest point of the townhomes?
Excuse me.
I don't have it in front of me, so what was it, 30?
This is an elevation.
What was it, 30s?
Do you want to set it architectural drawings? But, um, it's, um.
36?
24. It's approximately, um, 35 feet.
Okay.
On average.
All right.
It's a three and a half story, so it's going to be different on the, on the front to the rear.
Yeah, and then you have, obviously, you have this slope there.
But the elevations are on, listed on the, on the.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or concerns at this time, um, Consular?
I just wanted to double check, uh, Mr. Hammer, you, when you're referring to the access for trash and fire, you referenced Willie Street, or you, do you mean Wigan Street on the other side, or that?
Excuse me, I, I do get, I do get these commonly.
It's, I know, they both start with W, and it's kind of, I was, I was just trying to clarify, because Willie, Willie Street is the only access point in and out.
Any carve-out we'll have to take.
We can provide a mechanism to come down.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
You know.
Yeah.
Onto, onto.
Wigan Street.
Wigan, so, uh, we can take a look at that.
Okay. Thanks.
Now, just to play devil's advocate, if we start carving into this hill for another access, going back to the original plans, which was submitted a while back, are you going to be creating or have to readdress any stormwater issues there?
We always, we all.
It's not the role of the board to, to create issues, but I just want that to be, that's just something I think of.
So it will take away, um, some available s, snow storage for the plowing on Wigan.
Yeah.
Um, it would add some additional, uh, impervious to the, the drainage on Wigan, but all that water.
Is going.
Goes down to Dutton. There's a, there's a catch basin at the bottom of Dutton, at the end of Dutton, that essentially acts like a, um, a, a pavement detention basin. So there's this, there's a fair amount of flow that's going, uh, down to Dutton. This development would actually reduce that, because all of that runoff that's currently coming off of this property that is not being, uh, channelized or, or routed, will now be captured and directly put into the, uh, city, uh, storm drains.
Okay. Just trying to get everything enlightened into the entire package. So Consular, if you, if you're seeking the continuance, and, you know, I appreciate your candor, are you looking at the first meeting of May?
That, May 2nd would be, would be good.
Good, okay.
Not available, uh, on the 25th.
Okay.
Uh, May 9th, actually, so, second Monday will be May 9th.
It'll be May 9th, Consular.
Is that May 9th?
Yeah, we go two, two and four.
Okay, May 9th then.
Okay. All right, any other comments or concerns? None being heard, may I make a, may I have a motion? I can't make a motion. May I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022 dash 11 for four to eight Wigan Street and 153 Willie Street, to continue the public hearing of this matter to May 9th, 2022.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Proko, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Uh, approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May 9th.
Member Brier.
Approve continuance.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
So this petition has been approved to May 9th, we look forward to seeing you, we appreciate all coming in this evening, uh, as a, as a matter of notice, this is the public notice, there'll be no requirements for postings or abutted notices at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Consular, thank you to all. Moving forward, other, other business, we have none, we have minutes for approval from March 14th, 2022. Thank you, sir. Uh, has anybody have, does anyone have any comments, concerns, additions, deletions? None being heard? Any other comments, concerns? May I have a motion for acceptance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from May 14th, uh, excuse me, March 14th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Uh, accept the minutes for approval.
Vice Chair Peck.
Uh, approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve minutes from March 14th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes from March 14th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve minutes, March 14th, 2022.
The minutes have been accepted and approved, any other items brought forth? None being heard, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, I want to credit Mr. Vice Chairman for the, uh, swift adjournment process. Uh, meeting adjourned, thank you for your time.